All right, so it is six o'clock. I know Don thought he might or might not join us tonight, so we'll go ahead and get started. But I'll watch the participant list to see if he's coming in. So it is Monday, May 3rd, 2021. We are at the Moretown Select Board. We are meeting via Zoom again. And so we'll start off, we have general public comment tonight. We have a few guests. Then a fairly early adjournment, depending on how things go. So we're going to start now with general public comments. So if there's anyone that's joining us tonight for general public comment, come on off mute and share what you'd like to share, please.
This is Craig. May I speak?
Craig, yep, go ahead.
Hi, Select Board. Craig Oshkello, I live on Living Tree Lane, which is a new private road off Freeman Hill Road. Been here six years and we have approved PUD or Plan Unit Development with seven units from 2015. And while all the lots remain in the same place, it turns out that one driveway is ending up with three, serving three houses. So the zoning administrator, David, came out and visited. I'll let him speak for himself, but I think to determine that we need to create another private road here. So before you tonight should be an application with three of our top names. We have a homeowners association, so the HOA got together and did our, one of our first big decisions. And we, we came up with a list of our top three choices. I'll leave it there if you have any questions. And if I may, I pass the mic over to our new neighbor Paige Finkelstein, who's a resident here in our Plan Unit Development. Thank you, Tom.
Yep, thank you, Craig. Paige, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Paige. Like Craig said, it's really nice to meet everyone. My husband and I are going to be one of the units off of this drive that we're hoping you'll approve our, our name choice to become a private road. So I'm just here to observe and show support. And it's really nice to, to see everyone.
Well, thank you and welcome to town. Really a nice area up there. All right, any other general public comment before we move on? Right, seeing no one with their hand up or screaming in the background. We'll go ahead, move on the agenda. So we have Cheryl Lynn. She's here to talk about the validation in general resolution related to Article 7, which was the sidewalk loan. So Cheryl Lynn, if you want to come off mute, please. And do share.
You just text me and she's having, she can't hear the meeting.
Okay.
Technically, technical difficulties.
All right, so. Well, while she's trying to go ahead with that, why don't we go ahead and let her fiddle with, she can come in and out and I can let her back in. I see that Tori is here from the school board. So why don't we just go ahead and we'll take 15 minutes, 15 or 20 minutes with Tori and then we'll pick up with Cheryl Lynn. She's available at that point. That's all right. Sounds like she's calling in. So our next guest tonight is Tori Smith. Welcome, Tori. Tori is the Select Board Chair, the School Board Chair for the Harwood Union Unified District. And based on what we heard last week or their last call, last Select Board meeting, there were some questions on the school board voting, revoting again with the merger with the, I guess, the seventh and eighth grades. So Tori has jumped on to just kind of give us an update, kind of what's going on. You know, we hear lots of things, read some things, but this way it's coming right from someone who knows. And then if we have a few questions, the board is welcome to go ahead and ask. But again, welcome, Tori. Thank you very much. So if you can just let us know what, what's coming up and maybe some reasons behind that and we can go from there.
Sure, thanks. Thanks for having me tonight. It's nice to see you all. And also joining us is Tim Jones, who's the vice chair with me. And we've been working together for a couple of months now and I'm just really excited about our collaborative efforts. Tim lives in Faceton and he's been on the board for, I think this is his third year. So could you, could you pepper me with a couple more questions? So I have a little bit better sense of what I can tell you.
Yeah.
I don't want to waste your time.
Yep, no, that's no problem. So we understand that you guys, correct me if I'm wrong, are as a board going to be voting again to merge the Crossit Brook students with the middle school students up at the Harwood High School. And the timeline there and just really the reasonings by that. And just really what, what is the plan going forward with mergers or not and students changing? Just so that we can understand some, we're better equipped to, you know, support or not.
Okay, I will try to answer and ask additional questions if I haven't covered enough bases. And Tim, feel free to jump in and contribute as well. So back in, I think it was December, the board voted to merge the seventh and eighth grades at Crossit Brook in the fall of 2022, so a year from now or a little over a year from now, almost, almost two years from the time it voted. And we have been frankly not doing much about it since then. Partly because it's sort of, there wasn't much of a rush and we needed to sort of figure out, the next step we thought was to figure out what we would need to do as a district to be prepared for that. And in this case, the first big thing would be to make some facilities decisions. Would Crossit Brook need an addition or not in order to have enough space for the students to thrive there? So that's actually where the board work has been focused. And in January, the board put together sort of a list of requests of information. And then basically in March, a report came out answering those questions. Okay, it would cost this much to do a two-room addition, this much to do a four-room, this much to do a six. You could do it using annexes, which are like temporary buildings, or you could do it using a permanent addition. And these are the impacts on students, you know? This would mean that, you know, there'd be plenty of room for everybody. This would mean that there'd be plenty of room for regular classrooms, but maybe we would need a music teacher to float around the school, that kind of thing. So that was sort of, that's the information we've been looking at. And the goal is to make a decision about that facilities decision in the end of May. And then after that, the, the principals and staff will know what size space they're working with, when it will happen. And they can start planning around that. And that's when the real detail work starts happening. And that won't be carried out by the board, that would be carried out by the people in the schools. And, and communicating with parents and families as well to make sure that their concerns and questions were being answered and met. After the new board was elected in a town meeting day, in the first meeting, a motion was made to reconsider the merger of the seventh and eighth grade at Crossit Brook. And so that has gone on the table, well, not gone on the table. It is on the agenda for the same day as this other facilities vote. So my prediction is that we will start that meeting with a vote about to merge or not to merge. And then if we vote to continue the merger, then we will take up the facilities question and continue moving forward. In terms of why that was brought up, I don't know the exact reasoning behind the motion. I think actually Lisa may have been the person who made the motion, so she may have been able to fill that in for you. I do, I know that these decisions in our group have often been not enormous majorities. They're often 50, 40 or 60, 40. And we did have several new members to the board and it seems like maybe they had different position than previous board members. So it is a possibility to overturn the past work of the board. So we'll see what happens at the end of May. Does that answer your question? One, one thought I had was I have occasionally seen in the newspaper references to changes at Moretown that are on the, on the docket for the board and for the community. And I, I just wanted to say that that is not something that's on the docket at this time. About two years ago, the board did develop a long-term plan, but the plan was really like, this is the direction we think we're going to go, but we're going to need to finalize each of these decisions. And so as you probably know, that plan had sort of three components. The one was merging the seventh and eighth at Crossit. One was moving the fifth and sixth graders at Moretown over to Crossit. And one was the possibility of closing Faceton. But none of those are final decisions. And at this time, there is no discussion or agenda planning around moving the Moretown fifth and sixth graders over. So nothing's happening behind the scenes, in front of the scenes, anywhere about that at this time. Okay, you must have questions or Tim, maybe you have additions.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Tim, did you want to add anything?
No, no, I think that really encapsulates what we've been doing, just to accentuate that we've had facilities committees on both the high school and the middle school as well. So I think the, the work that we have been doing as representative of the board, even though there's been turnover here in March, this really started early last summer. We started the year speaking about this, obviously put it on the back burner some for all things COVID-related. But certainly at the end of the year, picked up steam. So I think it's a, it's been a broad group of board members working on this up to and including folks that have joined the board recently. So again, I think it's, it's really focused on facilities. And I think Tori made a good point of, you know, the longer term planning aspects of this. Certainly, I think the seven, eight decisions been, been on the table since before I joined. So again, the longer term elements of Moretown and Faceton certainly are conversations that, that need to be had into the future. But I think everybody's focused on, on this component of it right now.
Thanks. And Tori, thanks for that update. And certainly it's nice to hear that, certainly in the near future that Moretown is, there's no plans to shuttle these students. But with that decision to, to move the seventh and eighth, so you're looking at what the facility changes would, would be. And you'll, you'll learn that later this month. What is the ultimate goal though? Why do you feel that you need to merge those students, I guess, is the question? Is there, you know, what's the big impetus behind that?
You know, each board member will have different reasons that they're choosing to support either side. This process really started a couple of years ago after a difficult budget season, where we were looking at a number of factors that are really driving the property taxes up pretty rapidly. So a lot of the property taxes, I'm not sure if it's as complicated for town budgets as it is for the school budget. But, you know, we put together a certain, we have control of our certain set of numbers. But then the state actually controls a huge number of the sort of multipliers and dividers that are going to create our tax rate. So if we look at what's happening in our district and how that's playing out in the tax rate because of the state formula, things like declining enrollment, which have been sort of happening across our district, not in each town, but have as a whole across our district, been happening consistently for, you know, 10 or 15 years now. And it is actually happening through almost all of Vermont, almost all of New England, even all of the Northeast. Like this is a, this is not, this is not a problem of our district explicitly, but it is a problem in our district. Declining enrollment basically drives our per student cost up. And the per student cost is one of the major factors in the tax rate. So that's the declining enrollment also sort of, it's tricky because you don't just lose like 30 kids in one school and now you can drop a class. What happens typically is, you know, you lose two or three kids in each school, which at the elementary school level isn't necessarily such a big deal. But when you lose two or three kids from each school and we have, you know, five feeding elementary schools, that's going to be 10 to 15 kids in each graduating class in high school. And so suddenly that's like, that's a, that's a substantive number of kids, right? So anyways, it feels to me like one of the things that's happened is these little drops that are coming out of the school, the elementary school populations are then hitting the high school in a pretty detrimental way, which then has, historically before we were united, it was more obvious because the high school budget would have to make these huge cuts every year. But the locals, the, the elementary schools wouldn't have to because they just had these little, these little drips. But Harwood would have these drop lets, I don't know, or they'd lose a quarter cup instead of a drop. So we were seeing declining enrollment and we are seeing also when the district merged, we received a pretty great tax benefit for five years. So the first year we were going to get 10 cents off our property tax, the next year was eight cents, next year six cents. So we were really insulated even for the last four or five years from our rising taxes by this tax incentive that we had. Well, this coming year will be the last year that we have it. So one of the things the board could see is that even though we haven't had to raise taxes very much in the last couple of years, we're almost done with that tax incentive. And now we're going to have to actually cover our community every bit of the tax rate increase. And so we were looking at almost like a little kind of cliff that we were going to fall off of. And that year that, the year, the tax or the, the budget year before we came up with the motion that really started all this, we had looked at cutting, I think it was just $300,000 from, you know, it was probably a $38 million budget then, which doesn't seem like very much. But suddenly we're looking at maybe either cutting foreign language in the elementary schools or cutting all the behavioral. We had just hired a bunch of basically specialists who could try to work with kids before they needed, like kids who were on the cusp, maybe not quite special ed, but they weren't thriving. So could we bring in a specialist who could try to work with those kids individually, help support them, get a little extra growth that year and allow them to stay thriving? Instead of having, I mean, we hope that all children thrive in our special education. But if we could just kind of keep them thriving and mainstream that, that felt like an even better solution. And just to make sure every kid was getting what they needed. So we were looking at having to cut that suddenly. So, you know, a $300,000 cut, for example, that's for teachers. So we, we kept seeing that every year, we kept trying to plug these little holes, plug these little holes. And, and it was like, we were just eroding programs slowly. And that is, that's a terrible feeling for schools. It's a terrible feeling for districts. So we tried, we said basically, we need to take a more holistic look at what's going on, how we're spending money, where it's going, what resources are being, how they're, how they're being allocated. And the other, of course, a huge thing that's been on people's minds for almost a decade now is the need for a bond at Harwood. So Harwood is a 50 or 60-year-old building. And although it has been actually incredibly maintained by our district and our, our facilities folks, it's still, you know, a pretty old building. It has original HVAC, it has original PAs. Like you can't get an announcement to go through the whole building at once, which is, that's not a safe, optimal environment in this, in this moment. We have leaky roofs, we have, oh, sorry, I'm getting some kind of feedback. We have asbestos in the lab tables and the flooring. We, we have about $20 million in essential repairs that have to happen. These are not luxury repairs. So one of the things that we also knew was coming down the pipe, we've got, so we've got declining student enrollment. We've got, we've got this tax incentive that we're going to lose. And we have, we know we need to get a bond to, to fix the high school, which is going to be another increase in taxes. So the board just realized we have to take a look and kind of put everything on the table. And let's see if we can find some ways to kind of use our resources a little more efficiently and still deliver the great education that we believe in and we count on. So that started this whole like analysis and we, we set up lists of questions we needed to know, not just enrollment, but building costs, class distribution, class sizes. And, and we kind of looked at all these pieces of the puzzle and that's where we kind of came up with the plan. So it is funny that money is often the thing that starts a conversation. But at every step of the way, the conversation has always been about money and outcomes, not just money. And when we look at this middle school merger, actually money has barely been on the table in our recent conversations. It's been a lot about, well, is the, what's the programming going to be like when we do it? Is it going to be just as good? Is it going to be better? We've seen some inequities between the two middle schools. Harwood and Crossit do not offer the same opportunities for their students. They're not necessarily better, one better than the other, but they're not the same. We've seen a pretty significant exodus from Harwood Middle School over to Crossit Brook Middle School, which has been kind of pushing Crossit at the seams at the same time that it's like asphyxiating Harwood a little. So, you know, all these things have led the board toward this path and down this path. I know that's a long-winded answer, but it's, it's like such a complicated ecosystem that people are trying to navigate and plan around.
No, I think that was a really good, good answer. I think something everyone needs to hear. And I think we, like I said, we hear, we hear drips of it and drabs of, you know, what these plans and mergers are and what the value is to our communities. So certainly having you here to, to explain a little of that and some of the motivations behind it. Let me ask some of the other board members, we have four or three other board members here tonight. John, Ray or Callie, do you have any questions for Tori or Tim? We have a few more minutes before we need to run with them.
I have a question. Dan, thank you, Tori and Tim for showing up tonight. Mine is more of a logistics question, I think. It sounds like you're going to vote next month on the merger again. And then the facilities, it just seems like to me that you would want to know the cost of the facility improvements before you would vote on the merger. Can you, and I know you've touched upon it, that it's not always all about the money, but it seems like that's a pretty important factor in deciding on how you would vote. Could you just explain that a little bit further to me, the whole sequence of things?
Sure. To some degree, the sequence is goofy because the last time the board made a decision about this, the decision was that we're merging. And then the next thing the board decided was now figure out how we're going to do that. This new thing about whether we're going to merge on or not is an add-on. It's not the will of the board not to merge. The will of the board is still to merge until we hear otherwise. That's a little, so that's just a sort of, that's to acknowledge that this process is awkward. This week, Tim and I are putting together an agenda and an outline for a discussion, which will take a closer look at the numbers. This report that came out in March actually does have, it has cost information. It doesn't have savings information in it. So I did resurrect some savings information from about a little over a year ago. And the savings a year ago for this move was predicted to be about $700,000 a year. That's almost 10 teachers a year in that we, so if we can cut $700,000 out of the budget, that's like not having to cut 10 teachers out of the budget. Does that kind of make sense? Because we can save all that money without cutting programs to our kids. But there will be costs associated with a building expansion. And I think what you'll see in our, it'll come out in our leadership packet this week, which comes out on Friday. And I actually strongly advise you to just always take a look, not just at our agenda, but this report that Tim and I put out before every meeting, because it really gives you a sense of sort of the between the lines of the agenda. You know, you guys as Select Board members, you of course know how to read your own agenda and, and understand what's really going to happen at the meeting. But probably some of your community members haven't kind of learned exactly what that implies. So Tim and I make this report to try to be really clear about what's going to happen and what, what it's going to be like. So this week, I really do hope to let people dig into seeing the savings opportunities, which this is all very rough, right? We're not, these are not, these are just rough to give you a sense of the scale and to, and to look at the, the costs depending on if we do temporary, if we do permanent. You know, I even, I'm pretty sure, I've got to run my models by the finance director before they go, they get publicized. But I think I've been able to create a model that shows, okay, if we pay for the temporary one for three years and at the same time we start paying on the bond, this is what it's going to cost every year. So I think, I think that might be the kind of information you're talking about, right? Does that sound right? And so we'll have a chance to dig into that this week or it'll actually be, sorry, on the 12th before we have this meeting on the, on the 28th. And we had provided some sort of big numbers, but I think it was hard to read it in a kind of intuitive sense and really be able to see how it all comes together. So we're getting there.
Okay, well, thank you. That's a very good answer. Thank you very much. So Tori, is, um, do you mind sending maybe Sasha, when you send out your agenda? Send her the agenda and your, your little piece so we could, is that something you could do?
Maybe I could ask Sasha, what do you get from us typically? Cause it's in the board packet every month. So if you get that, it is in that.
Is it in that?
I believe Cheryl Lynn gets it as the.
So maybe Cheryl Lynn could forward to, so basically what happens is the front page of the packet is the, is the agenda. And then hopefully every month, the next page or two are the leadership report. And that also always includes links to, you know, say we're having a discussion about the middle school. So like in our last week's report, we sort of said, this is what we're going to talk about. And by the way, here are links to the relevant materials. And so it's, it's a pretty easy way to get caught up to the materials that we're using, the resources that we're using and get a sense of how the discussion is going to be framed, not what people are going to say, but how it'll be framed.
Now that would be good. And Cheryl Lynn, in the future, yeah, maybe you can pass that to Sasha and she could send it out to the board.
Does that, and does that sound like what you're receiving, Cheryl Lynn? The packet.
I do not recall receiving any packets. I know we get the agendas, but I have not.
Oh, so you just get a one-page thing? Okay, I'm happy to ask Shannon to, or Shannon and Laura to add you guys to that list. I don't, I don't see any problem with that if they can add you to the distribution list.
That was, that sounds good. I like the idea of your explanation kind of between the lines.
Yeah.
I don't want to do it, but.
Right. I think some weeks it takes us 10 to 15 hours or maybe, maybe not 15, but it, it can be a huge investment of time. But boy, these, our meetings lately are so full that it feels like if we don't lay that groundwork, it's very hard to feel like we're really doing a thoughtful job with what we're considering.
Yeah, with that many board members, it's, it's difficult to let everyone have their time of relief without that type of stuff. Thanks, John. Did you have any questions or Callie?
Yeah, I, I do. Hi, Tori and Tim, good seeing you both again. And I was just wondering, the other night at the board meeting, you were talking about whether to add two, four, six, and whether they'd be permanent or annex and so on. And I'm just wondering, are you considering the pandemic, the fact that there are just so many unknowns going forward? Who knows in the future, I mean, the governor's done such a great job in Vermont. Who knows in the future, it, it might be the recommendation that class sizes be a lot smaller than they are now. You know, with social distancing and everything else. You know, we just don't know what's going on. So I just am curious if that's come into play at all in terms of your discussions.
Tim, I've been dominating. Would you like to take this one or would you like me to just keep going?
You know, you are on a roll.
Okay, social distancing and the future of the district. This is, this is an unknown. I will tell you that I personally have a fear that this is our first pandemic and not our last. But I also feel like I can't go through life planning on living pandemic after pandemic after pandemic, right? Like, how could we, how could we do that? If it turns out that social distancing becomes something that we have to plan around all the time, it does seem like districts all across Vermont will have to rethink a lot of things. And, and also what I have seen this year and last year is that when the districts were expected to pivot and pivot and pivot and to hire new staff in order to provide a different level of service or a different style of service to deal with the pandemic. The state has provided money for us to do that. So John, I think it's. So, John, I think it's fair to expect that if indeed we continue to live in this semi-apocalyptic moment, that we will have to be needing funding from the state to do that. The other thing actually is that, for instance, right now, we are able to do three-foot spacing with masks in our schools. You know, it is working. And the spread in our schools has been almost nil. So the other thing we've learned is that these protocols really work. They have been a lot of work. You know, it has been a huge amount of effort for our students, for our teachers, and of course, for our custodial staff to develop all new protocols. But the kids have done a great job. The teachers have done a great job. And we have seen almost no spread in our schools. A lot of the spread has occurred outside the schools and then been brought to the schools. But there's, there's almost no evidence that the school, the spreading is happening inside the buildings. And, and the K to six kiddos have been at this three-foot spacing for, or three, three to six-foot spacing for most of the year. And it's just the seven to 12 have just gone to it last week. So actually, one other thing to think about is, you know, we'll have, we'll have more research or we'll have more data by the end of the year. And, and all of these decisions, and the implementation of these decisions is, is more than a year out, right? So again, we'll have another year to collect data and see, does it feel like we're going to need social distancing? Right now, the word that we're getting is we're not likely to need more social distancing next year than what we're doing. There, I have heard that there's a possibility we'll need masking and we'll maybe need to continue some other protocols. But I think we'll have a better sense of where we are, you know, in August. But we still have a whole year after that. Do you feel like I've done a halfway decent job answering you? You, you got me to have to pretend I was Dr. Fauci or Dr. Levine there, so.
Sound a good story anyways.
Thank you.
Callie, did you have anything to?
I don't. You actually did a great job really explaining or answering any questions that I had. And I really appreciate you guys taking the time to come in and have this conversation tonight, because I think it's been helpful, at least for me.
Thanks. You know, we're glad to be here. I, I strongly feel that you of all people know about how complicated stuff is and how many interests, and I don't mean like political interests, I mean, like the needs of the different groups that you're trying to meet anytime you're making a decision. And we definitely see that. And so I think we're glad to sort of perspective and context that we're working in. Tim, I bet you've got some thoughts to add here.
No, I mean, I think again, you, you close well there, you know, to John's question, you know, I think the chess match that everyone has watched play out this year has been just definitely handled by, you know, our administrators and all that support, all sports staff that have kept our schools open. I'm so very thankful and horrified to look around the nation and see people that are so far behind us still. So, you know, I agree that normal may take on a new tone this fall, but hopefully that means all of our children are in school. And, and I think our children will be prepared and as will our administration, our teachers, our support staff will be prepared to, to meet those challenges going forward. But I think we have come to that moment where now our schools are open. And you sort of get that, you know, it, it couldn't be any more constrictive than it is. And, and we're making, we're making it work.
And the schools are actually vibrant, joyful places too. That's been, I've been actually subbing because they were so desperate for subs that they even let the board members do it. But it has been, oh, it's been a lot of work and it's been, I've had a lot of moments to relearn humility and practice humility. But boy, being around that kind of student energy and seeing the warmth and the connection and the joy and the play that is still happening in our schools has been a bright spot in, in challenging times.
Now, that, that's great. The administration's done a great job and the teachers, everyone within the school. You know, and it's noticeable. I mean, you know, from the outside. So that's great. And thank you both for, for coming in. As, as Kelly said, it was beneficial. And I think open communications with all of us work best. So again, thanks. And if there's anything ever you guys want from us or questions, this board certainly reach out anytime.
Well, thank you all. It's good to be here with you.
All right, thanks. And so, yeah, we'll go ahead and move on the agenda and thank you everyone for having patience. I know we kind of gone over, but I thought it was important, good discussion. So it was worth it to go. So it sounds like, or looks like Sherilyn may have audio now. Unmute yourself now so we can hear you.
He did unmute it. Can you hear me?
I can, Sherilyn. So now we have Sherilyn here to talk about some financial stuff. So go ahead, Sherilyn.
Okay, I sent all the board members the loan for the sidewalk that was approved. And I'm going to need at least three board member signatures. So if you could, three of you or all of you sign that and scan it back to me by nine tomorrow morning, that'd be appreciated. So I could get it back to the bank. That being said, and with there, there's also the resolution that's part of the loan as well that needs to be adopted. And there's also a validation resolution, which is something that we normally don't have to do. That's due to the fact that it's over a five-year term. It's a 10-year term loan. So in order for that to, this loan to go through, the validation resolution needs to be signed off on stating that we've done everything that we're supposed to do. We warned the article in the warning for town meeting one time. And anything that is over five years needs to be warned at least three times in the paper, which is why the validation resolution needs to be signed off on. It's gone to the attorneys, our town attorneys, the bank attorneys. And this is just the next step for us to move forward with this loan.
Very good. Did everyone have an opportunity to see that was sent today? So if you put it sometime this evening, print that out. And go ahead. Again, this is something that was approved. This is a 10-year loan. So there'll be 10 payments at $26,884.35 for nine of them. The other one, the last one's 40 cents plus accrued interest. So something we all was voted on, but just go ahead and sign that if you couldn't, scan it over back to Sherilyn. And with the resolutions as well, and the, she has, in this packet, you'll notice any of the things that we need to adhere to for the certification is, is in there. So go ahead and read that if you have any questions on whether it's being done or not.
And with that being said, Tom, I'm going to need someone to make a motion to adopt the resolution and the validation resolution as well.
All right. I'd move said motion. Give me a second. Here's Kelly. John, thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing here none, all in favor of motion vote aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you, everyone. All right. Anything else, Sherilyn?
I have two more things that I need to go over. Another article, Article 11 for the self-contained breathing apparatuses. We need to look at funding for that. Stefan had given you guys the bids that you opened and the voters approved 22,000. The bid came in at 21,999. I went out to three other banks and they all put bids back in with, I asked for a three-year and a five-year term. And the lowest rate that I got for a three-year term would be 1.59. The five-year term is a 1.89. That would be through Community Bank as well. No one else could beat those rates at all. I just wanted to point out there that it was discussed with Stefan that he was looking at possibly going back to the voters again, next year for another three self-contained breathing apparatuses. So I just want to remind you of the terms of the three and five-year loans on there. I did speak with one other member on the finance committee. And they were thinking about the same thing, because if that's the case, then either we get to either come up with the money or put it into the budget next year. So that being said, I would recommend.
Well, we also have, we can just add this into the tax rate this year when we do the tax rate in June, right?
Did you mean the 21,000?
Yeah.
No, you have to, no, you can't. You have to put it into the budget in order to put it into the tax rate.
All right. All right. So are you wanting us to make a decision on that 21,000, on that tonight?
I would, because I believe Sasha may have a better answer, but I do believe that these have been ordered. So we're going to have to have the financing for them.
I just had, so it's three or five years?
Right. Three years at 1.59, a payment of 7567. Or five years at 1.89 with a payment of 4652.
And so you and the other person on the finance committee, what was their recommendation?
Recommended going to three years, just in case you guys decide not to put it in the budget and we have to finance again next year. Again, these loans can be paid off early without penalties. I would recommend next year, if you guys want to do this, maybe you just put it into the budget. And then we don't have to worry about a payment, but we can discuss that in November.
Very good. John, what do you think? Or Callie? Thoughts? It's my thoughts to go ahead with what the finance committee says. I would take any other thoughts?
I, I, I agree. Yeah.
Yeah. I'm good. Callie? Thanks.
Yeah.
All right. So I'm going to move to go ahead with the three-year note for the SCUBA equipment. There's a second. Callie, thank, Callie's in there. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
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 Here you go, Sherilyn.
And the next is the town hall windows. We, we discussed, we did get a grant for that. The bid came back higher than the original bid due to the fact of their price changes. That being said, the total that the project is going to cost is $5,350 more than planned on. We put $3,550 in the budget. The total job now is going to cost 12,450. I'd also, I'd like to point out that we did put in building maintenance, $5,500. $600 of that is already spoken for because of contracts with the elevator and the fire extinguishers and all. I went back today and looked back on the expenses in the previous year. And assuming that nothing major happens with like the foundation or anything. And expenses go other than that foundation project. We should only go over budget by about $600 if we do move forward. The Preservation Trust Company has to approve anyone who does any of this work in this company that put a bid in on it is the one that they did approve. So we can't just go out and have just anyone do this job. Arcadia, the, the, the quote that I sent you is the one that needs to do the job. So I'd like to ask the board to move forward with this project before pricing goes up anymore.
So Sherilyn, and the job that's being considered is redoing all the windows, is that correct? Is that?
Yes, that's correct. They're going to, yeah, they're going to restore them. The weather stripping is going to be done. The springs and all that are going to be done. It's going to hopefully help save on the heat, heating on the building.
So when we go in there and try to open a window, I'm going to be able to do it without breaking a back or a window or, or something? All right. Any questions on Sherilyn's ask?
I have a question. And I'm in favor of the project. I'm, I'm just wondering about the bid process, because I didn't see where we had a formal bid opening for the project, which I thought according to our, our purchasing policy, we're supposed to have a bid opening process.
With this grant, I had to put it out to three companies. And then they had to put it back to the preservation company or present, excuse me, Preservation Trust. And then they have to approve who's going to do the work.
So you had sort of clarify, you did have three bids. The bids went to Preservation Trust. They opened them, they made the decision and awarded the bid to, you know, whatever the company is. And so is that the process?
Yeah, I send them all to them. They're already open, but they all get sent to them to approve who's going to do it. And honestly, there was only two companies that responded back. And this is the only company that was going to be able to do the work. One, because of the work that needs to be done. And one company didn't want to have anything to do with it.
Why? No, I think Ray had the questions we asked. And we just had that purchasing order in another area. So we just want to make sure it's consistent along, as long as you did everything is, is as it was supposed to in this, going to the Historical Society or whatever it went to, I think qualifies there. Ray, are you satisfied with that?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Sherilyn. Thank you.
John, what about yourself? Any questions on the projects?
No.
So Sherilyn, and I'll get to you, Callie, I just thought of something as those. So Sherilyn, you said we had, and I don't have my book in front of me, what did we put in 6,500 for maintenance?
5,500 for building maintenance and for this grant, because it was supposed to be a matching grant, was 3,550. So we're going to get another 3,550 from the Preservation Trust when the work is done. The total project is 12,450.
Right. So you're looking for us to come up with around the difference between 9,000 and so 3,500 roughly?
No, it's going to end up being $5,350 more than what we, the original quote was.
Okay. I thought you were getting, you were using, I was wondering, how much money are we using out of the 5,500 that we already have?
All of it. Well, $5,350 is what would be needed. Out of that $5,500 that's put in the building maintenance, 5,350 would have to be used.
And we've already used, what, 600 of it?
We will have us by the end of the, we've only used 271, but one of the inspections hasn't happened yet.
All right. Well, we'll end up, I mean, there's going to be more maintenance on that building between now and the end of the year. But, you know, we can deal with that as it comes along. Callie, did you have any questions on the, the restoration?
No, I think it's a great idea.
All right, Sherilyn, I don't think you need them, because that money is in the budgets. So you can go ahead. The board is in favor of using that towards, towards that grant or towards that window project.
I can go ahead and let Arcadia know that they can move forward. And that project will be starting in, in the fall sometime.
Very good. Thank you, Sherilyn. What else? Anything else?
That's, that's all I have for financing. Yep.
You? Any other questions for Sherilyn while she's here? All right. So we're going to move ahead. We have Clark Emanon. All right, so we're gonna move ahead. Uh, we have Clark Emanon there in the center square, or at least in my center square. Um, uh, Clark, thank you for your patience. I know we were expecting six-thirty and, uh, six-fifty, you could be out on the river right now casting flies around. Um, so why don't you share with us what you have for housing needs on the housing needs committee?
Yeah, um, thanks for having me. Sort of seems like old times, so I'm not, not surprised or annoyed, just. Nice to see Santa Claus is still joining us too there, John, so you're looking good, looking good.
And Walter hears your voice as well, Clark, in there.
I know, Walter, gee whiz, good to see you there, big guy.
Poked up.
Hey, um, so I'll try to keep this, um, fairly brief. Um, if you know, when, um, we were working on the grant for the town office, uh, I was required to go to a housing training and town was required to have a, um, a housing committee that was, um, formed and didn't really go much beyond that, as, as we all know, it never really, um, there's no active projects or, you know, any kind of, uh, exploration of that going on. However, I felt that it was important to bring it up again, uh, probably because of the focus that's been going on everywhere, particularly in Vermont and, and our communities around affordable housing. And, um, we have, um, and, and I think, I'm, I'll just kind of let you know what, basically two things that I have in mind. I, what I'd like to try to do in Moretown is take time, uh, to focus on how Moretown can participate, uh, in the affordable housing effort. And it's obviously going to be involving some volunteers within the town to take, um, take that on. And I'm not advocating for a particular approach to that at this point, but I did wanna bring it up to the select board that I think it's important to take a look at that. Um, I will admit that I've had a fantasy as I take a look at some of the property that are, um, that have kind of open spaces within the town as possible places for affordable housing projects. And actually, I was, when, uh, when Craig was on earlier and, and, you know, I was reminded about the Living Tree Alliance and I took a look at the website that they have. And certainly that, you know, is a, also a way that towns, um, can leverage the space that they have for affordable housing, even though I don't think that's necessarily what Living Tree is designed to do or purports to do, but nevertheless, um, it's an opportunity for, um, a group of individuals and families to live in a particular spot, um, and keep land open and available, but at the same time create a, you know, a sense of community amongst themselves and also contribute to the life of the town. The other, um, the, the other issue that I think is related to affordable housing in Moretown is also the possibility of exploring, um, some wastewater solutions, um, in Moretown. Now, we, I'm not trying to point out any particular problem that I think we have right now. There's no, um, obvious, um, pollution into, uh, rivers or streams or other properties within, within Moretown. However, wastewater solutions have been used in some of the smaller villages, uh, Rochester, uh, and Warren certainly is an example of that in the valley. Um, and Walcott is also taking a look at this. The possibility of bringing in some kind of decentralized wastewater treatment facility in a particular place in town, perhaps the village, perhaps, uh, the junction of one hundred B and two. Uh, but, uh, this would create an opportunity to, um, for residents to participate if they felt that they wanted to do so and they felt that it was affordable for them. But it could also be something that could provide some economic incentives for business to, to locate in, um, parts of Moretown, given the opportunity to have wastewater systems that were, um, robust enough to handle different types of, um, treatment, uh, whether, you know, if it be a, uh, some sort of commercial kitchen of some sort. Um, we all know that Moretown School cannot, uh, produce its own meals because it doesn't have enough adequate wastewater treatment facilities in order to handle that. And if that's, if I'm mistaken at that point and that's changed, let me know, but at least that was my understanding in the past. So, um, what I'd like to just, um, have people respond to at this point is i- if you have a perspective of, um, others in the, in, in the town that have an interest in doing this that you think that I could reach out to, that would be great, and you don't necessarily have to throw them under the bus right now, but you could email me and let me know who those might be, um, and I would happy to move forward on that. Um, and also, if you know as a select board that there are some initiatives that are, um, being explored within Moretown. Um, when I think, and I, I guess the last thing I'll say is my, my definition of affordable housing and, uh, or ex- I will gotta put out what my definition of affordable housing is because I'm not sure that I have enough expertise in that to, to offer a definition, but I certainly, um, would imagine that if we could provide and develop some affordable housing in Moretown to help meet the demand, um, not only within our town, but also in the region, um, that it would be a place, um, that may have, um, sort of mixed housing. Um, it may be traditional looking, um, um, sort of apartment styles, A B, um, uh, manufactured homes, you know, it could be a variety of things that we might be able to provide in Moretown. Uh, so I'm curious at this point what, you know, any particular, um, uh, perspectives that the board happens to have or some things that you would like me to take a look at, which, um, I'm, I'm happy to do and, and report back at a, at a later date.
Well, thanks, Clark. Um, that was a nice, uh, explanation of a committee that we don't often hear from or really think about.
Or ever hear.
Never hear from. Well, to throw one person under the bus, I'm gonna do that right now, is, is Ray, um, he did have some interest at one point, uh, of, uh, of treatment facilities and such, so you may wanna, you two may wanna get together. Um, I think anything that you can, uh, learn that's going out there, Clark, with affordable housing, um, there's gonna be a fair amount of money available, and whether any of that's earmarked for affordable housing or not, I don't know. Um, so there may be opportu- money opportunities coming up. Um, but if you were, you know, now that you retired, have a little opportunity to spend, just kinda, you know, what's happening in some of these other communities as far as affordable housing, how are they doing it? Um, because I think it can, uh, certainly enrich the community in a number of ways.
Yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a few documents that are online with, uh, um, with the state, which I can, uh, yeah, I won't send them to you because there's, there's, they're pretty long and involved, but I'll, I'll take a look at, uh, them and, and perhaps get on in a month or so and provide you with a sort of a book report of sorts in terms of what those are. Um, and, I mean, I will actually mention another person in Moretown, um, and I think, Ray, you and I may have chatted about this in the past, but, um, Karen, Karen Horn was pretty well in, in, um, the, the one document that I'm looking at now. Um, Karen's actually mentioned in the acknowledge of it, it's called Wastewater Solutions for Vermont Communities. Um, so she's certainly, um, aware of this and, and probably has a lot more perspective in terms of who's done it and, you know, what the outcomes have been, so I'm happy to reach out to Karen too and check in with her.
Yeah. Tom, can I make a comment? This is David.
Yeah, uh, who, I'm sorry, who's that?
This is David Specht.
Oh, David, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um, uh, Clark, the planning commission right now is starting their, their assessment on redoing the zoning in the town, the whole, the whole thing. And I know that affordable housing issue concerns are on their list of things to consider, different ways to encourage additional development in town. So they meet actually this Wednesday. I would suggest if you could attend that Zoom meeting, that would, uh, get you in touch with the town committee who is in charge of the zoning and that would be a a good place to, to get additional support, and Karen Horn is on the planning commission too.
Right, right. Uh, David, what time's the meeting?
Uh, six-thirty, I believe.
Six-thirty, okay.
It's, uh, it's on the, uh, agenda on the town website with the link.
It is, okay. And, okay, great. So, yeah, I'll, uh, I'll see if I can make that. That's, that's great, thanks.
Thanks, David. Um, Ray or John, did you have any other, or, uh, Callie, anything for Clark?
Yeah, I just, uh, again, uh, I've been wanting to get into this village sewer, uh, cuz I think it is, uh, definitely going to have to happen at some point within the next years. So I, I think, uh, uh, I would like to be involved with it and Clark and, and, and start working towards a, that goal of, uh, getting something for this town.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I meant to do it last year, but the whole COVID thing kinda put everything back a year, so it looks like we're heading out of it. I'll reach out to you, you know, sometime towards the end of the month.
Yeah, okay.
Start working towards it.
Great. Yeah, I, um, when I was taking a look at what other towns may be working on this at this point, um, there was a kickoff meeting or one of the meetings in Walcott to try to explain this process or these solutions, um, that was actually held in, um, the middle of November in twenty nineteen, and there hasn't been anything else on their town website since that. So I think th- they also sort of came to a halt, um, and maybe some other towns did too, but as we all know, there will be some, um, uh, significant monies that'll be coming in and, and per- and perhaps some of that will, uh, if you'll pardon the expression, trickle into, um, into this particular funding stream too, so. Um, yeah, I think it's probably a good time to start focusing on this in, in Moretown.
Thank you, Clark.
Cool, all right. Thanks, everybody.
All right, so we'll, uh, Ray will be in touch with you and you can, um, move forward. John, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, it was, uh, good, uh, to see Lisa Shepherd's project on Route Two. So it'd be good to have.
Yeah, so, oh, you mean the, the, um, the, the housing project that's right?
Yeah.
The big one right near, yeah. Um, Gallagher Acres, right? Is that the one you mean?
No, not Gallagher Acres, uh, next to the, the Shepherd Homestead there. Blanche Shepherd's House next there.
I think it's Riverwalk Drive.
What's that?
Oh, okay, right.
I think it's Riverwalk Drive.
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah, right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I know, I think that what's been going on in that part of town is, um, and, and it, it my sense is because of the convenience of being closer to the highway and waterbury, you know, it's sort of a village, you know, a village center with services that, that that will continue. Um, so, you know, Paige, can I ask you a question? Um, just, I don't, I don't, yeah, so, um, now, this is, you can answer carefully if you want, but I'm sort of curious in terms of moving into, you know, this, you know, kind of a co-housing, or not kind of, it's co-housing project. Um, is affordability part of the, the impetus when people think about moving into something like that?
Definitely, and it's something our community cares about too. Um, uh, I think it's, I mean, so my, my husband and I are, um, moving on a, a prefabricated house, which really cuts down our costs and it's very, very small. Um, so I think that, uh, and then the community was really like open to that, um, because they want, you know, uh, there to be, uh, affordable housing options. You know, the cost of our plot was still, you know, for us, a significant financial investment. I, I like, I don't know that I'd call it quite affordable housing, but certainly much more affordable for us to be able to live in this kind of like beautiful acreage and to share resources with other families. And there are a lot of reasons that we chose, uh, Living, Living Tree, but it's definitely something the community is, has talked about in our, um, common house that we're building, there will be some, some bedrooms in there, and we've talked about ways that maybe we could rent those out inexpensively for people who want to be part of the community, um, but have more limited resources as, as well. Um, so I would say it's, uh, yeah, it's, it's still tricky to do anytime I think you're, you're building or bringing anything and, and you're purchasing the land, it's still, you know, like, um, and, I mean, some, somewhat of an expense, but definitely way more affordable for us than, like, we had looked really briefly at buying land and, and building and that just, you know, wasn't really feasible for us. So it is, it is a topic of discussion, even though, um, I, I wouldn't say that that was why Living Tree started necessarily, or that's not my understanding.
Yeah, that, that was my understanding too, that was, that wasn't the, um, uh, the overriding, you know, one of the overriding, uh, values that, um, but it seems to be, um, a characteristic that is, you know, um, relatively com- um, it's, it would, I would imagine somewhat common in terms of co-housing developments and stuff, so.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and this co-housing development, cuz we, we actually looked at con- uh, communities all over the country and, and this is way more affordable than, than a lot of them, especially the ones in the Pacific Northwest where like the starting prices of a lot of the homeless community are over half a million dollars, like completely inaccessible for, for most people, I, I think so. Um, from the research we've done, I think that the Living Tree folks, the community we're now a part of, like, do care and like want, like have that as, have, have that as a goal as well.
Mm-hmm, yeah, right. And I would echo what you heard from the rest of, or a lot of folks when you, when Craig was on earlier, that, uh, welcome to Moretown, we're glad you're here. Um, you're certainly the right age, age demographic that we're looking for, so I plan that you'll stay a long time.
That's the plan. We, we're, we're having a baby in a few weeks, so, um, that'll probably tie us here as well.
There you go, another person in the school too.
Yeah, yeah, a few years, the school discussion was relevant, I was excited to.
Indeed, I could see you watching them. Um, so anyway, folks, um, yeah, Ray, let's talk, um, I'll plan to get, uh, David, thanks a lot for reminding me about the planning commission. Um, I'm, I'm sure John Siegel will be shocked and amazed to see another person joining the meeting, so, um, I'll be happy to be there. So, I'll sign off, you know.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Brought me back to the days of you being on the board.
Yeah.
All right, so now we have, um, we have David.
Go along, bud.
David, uh, thank you for your patience, um, and I guess Paige you too, cuz you were waiting on the, the, um, E one, E nine nine one discussion, I think. So, David, if you wanna come off mute, um, kind of share what you got going on with us tonight?
Okay, the first issue I'll address is the, um, Living Tree Lane, Living Tree Community Road Name, uh, so that Paige doesn't have to stay here for all night.
All right.
Okay, so, um, this is a, a P U D, all the lot locations are predefined. The driveway which they're putting in now that will service two houses in the back uh, is now also becoming the emergency access to a house which is in front of him, which means that there will be three houses served by that driveway for emergency vehicle purposes. And that triggers a private road name requirement or a road name requirement, uh, according to the state E nine one, uh, regulations. The house that's in the front had been assigned an address on Living Tree Lane, but as I said, their access changed from Living Tree Lane to this new driveway. So that address will have to change. And I've been in contact with that owner, uh, through Craig, and she is amenable to having the address changed, to accommodate the E nine one requirements. So the select board has the ultimate authority to pick the road name. What is customary in this case is the E nine one coordinator asks the people affected for their preference. And if that preference is acceptable to the select board, it just helps cut down the pain of an address change. So the members of the, the community, I guess, went through quite a process and they came up with three names that they would like to have considered. Their third choice is Hemlock Way. Their second choice is Their second choice is. Community Lane. And their number one choice is Birdsong Way. I've done research on the name Birdsong Way. There is not another Birdsong Way in the state. So there's essentially no chance of any confusion. So it should be accepted by the E nine one board. And I would recommend that the select board. Adopt Birdsong Way is the name for the new private road per the residents' wishes.
All right, so moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Callie. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, so it is Birdsong Way. Very nice name.
Very good name. Excellent.
Okay. The next issue is. A address change in the Gallagher Acres development. That the state E nine one folks are telling me should be made because the current numbering is not accurate, is. Confusing and is in violation of the E nine one standards. I forwarded the email that I got from the state that shows the four properties in question. Did everybody get a chance to look at those?
Yes.
Yep.
So this will mean changing the address for four people. And before I went and wrote the letters and assigned new numbers. A, there also should be a name decision. And I did not want to proceed with this until I was sure that the select board would approve the change. I don't want another issue as happened with the Barnes application where. I assigned a number based on the E nine one requirements and the board overrode me and asked me, directed me to change it back.
So have you had any discussions with the people out there at all, David?
No, I didn't, didn't want to rile them up if you were going to say, no, don't do it.
Well, I guess. I mean, I like to follow what nine one one has to say, but I guess I haven't been out there and I haven't. You know, and again, I, I did see your letter tonight. I guess I got it. So I don't know how I feel on that without at least checking with the residents or seeing what kind of uproar there is going to be. With changing someone's address. What's everyone else think?
David, did they give you a, like a timeframe? Like, okay, we need it done by the first of June or anything like that. Is there any?
No. This is actually festered for a while.
Yeah, this is stuff that looked like when I read it, JB had been tossing around at one point, so I don't think another.
These things are, these things are not fun, so that's why I'm getting the ducks lined up to make sure if I proceed with. This address change, we're all in sync and it's going to carry through. And then the question would be. For selecting the name, how much do you want me to be involved trying to coordinate these four people to select a road name? I can just do it in a letter or get interactive, which is going to take more of my time. So I'd like a little direction on what you think I should expend this effort to try to make them happy.
Well, I don't think you need to babysit these people and, you know, help them make their name. I think in a letter. You know, if it's for responsible people, they should be able to come up with a name and a, you know, give them a, you know, a reasonable time period to do that. But I don't think you have to hold their hand right through it, no?
That's fine. I can try to do that. No matter how polite you are in a letter, sometimes they're not well received.
Yeah, you know, sometimes you follow up with a call or you even call beforehand and say, look, and I'm going to send you a letter. It's going to be talking about. So they, so they understand it, because, you know, oftentimes you, you get a letter from the town and all of a sudden you're like, you know, there becomes this. Certain amount of panic and you don't really read everything that's there. So, you know, either a follow-up call or even a, a call prior to say, look at. We're doing this. And then with the communication behind that with the letters, the reason we're doing it is for your safety or for the protection of the people there. And then it typically will have a better outcome. So depending on how you, you deliver that message, if you go in and you just say, you know, I'm changing your address, you know, you're going to get some significant pushback, but. If you use. You know, a good reasoning why you need to do it. May not be that painful, but I can see where it'd be somewhat painful regardless.
Can I, that. When these, when the letter goes out, perhaps the, the select board. Have it be a joint letter with the select board and the zoning administrator and possibly suggest to them that. Invite them to a meeting in, the first meeting in June and, and discuss it with them. So it, you know. Kind of eases the, the transition or something like that. What do you think about that?
So do you want me to invite them to the, indicate that this name change has got to happen and invite them to the select board meeting to discuss it? Is, is that what you're?
I think we should tell them that we've been directed to do this and, but, you know, if they have some concerns that they want to bring to the town. We should let them come to the select board and address them with us.
Yeah, I think we're certainly welcome to, if they have, David, if you get a significant pushback, maybe invite them. But I don't think we need to. Open up that door. I don't know where. You know, I don't mind having that at the, the meeting, but if David does a, a good job explaining the letter, why we're doing it, follow up with a call to him. And then if there's significant pushback, then we can certainly have him come to the meeting at that point.
Yeah, I honestly, I'm okay with that, Tom, as long as they have the funds of clairvoyance that they, if they have some, that they can come to the select board and, and address their concerns.
Yeah, I think, so David, in the letter, just include, you know, at, at some point in the letter, if there's significant. Interest to, to talk about this or however you want to put that. You know, the select board is, is certainly willing and able to do that along with you.
Okay. Excuse me, I had a cough, so I muted.
Oh, sorry.
All right, so I will, I will identify those people and get the letter out to them.
Very good. What else you got for us?
Uh, we're at fifteen zoning sites at this point this year. That's almost exactly what we were last time this year. Uh, I've been approached by Green Mountain Power. Was looking to give away, essentially give away, I don't want to put a price tag on it, but. The old schoolhouse on Route one hundred B up by the.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They're realizing it's no value to them. And rather than let it fall apart, they're looking. Is an opportunity to transfer it to the town, to the Historical Society. In my last contact, they had not received any contact from the Historical Society. So I don't know if there is interest on the part of the town or the Historical Society to take over this building, to get this property.
So if you could forward that information to Sasha, she can send it out to the, the board. So. We can take a look at that. I haven't, this is the first that I've heard that we were offered the property. And then, you know, if we can discuss as a board, there may be other uses. I mean, we were just. Talking about affordable housing. I don't know if that's a candidate for something like that, but. Yeah, I think it's something we should certainly take a look at to see. If it is of any value to us as a zoning administrator and. You know, knowing, being a little familiar with the property, do you see any value to the town of it?
The wastewater is going to be an issue to determine. And I've been working with Robert Pelosi, the district engineer, to try to determine how much land would have to go this. And what the wastewater requirements would be. It depends on a final determination of the status of the building. From a wastewater perspective. He was saying he could probably view it as an abandoned, non-functional building, so it's not even considered a structure and doesn't need any wastewater. However, the downside is if the, the town does want to take it over. And, and develop it where wastewater is required. Then you've got to have the land to do it, or you're going to just have a building with land and nothing can be done with it. So very preliminary still. But I thought you were that this is what they're looking at doing.
All right, we'll certainly make us, or keep us appraised of what's going on and.
I'll give Sasha updates and. Appraise the board of them.
Thank you.
I was wondering, does Don know about this?
John?
In the past, he did a lot of work on that.
Don Wexler.
Don Wexler.
I, I don't know.
Right.
We can make him aware, certainly.
David, would that building be, it must be in the flood plain or floodway or something, isn't it?
No.
It's not.
No, it's, it's high. It's way high.
Okay, right.
Yeah, if it gets up there, Ray, there's, it's been a bad day for a lot of people.
If it gets that high, there will be no, no power station left.
Yeah, the power stations below that. All right, David, anything else for us?
Martin Cameron had. Asked me about a storage unit in the lot where the town, you know, the town gravel pit is. I had given him some information and then. I went to give him, I did give him new information via phone message, but he, I guess he's on medical leave right now. So that has been delayed.
Okay.
It's development in the flood hazard area, so it's got to go through all the hoops that we went through on Dickerson Road. And I told him that I would do the applications. And I've learned that since this is a storage structure only and not an occupied structure. It will not need a certificate of elevation, which is going to save nine hundred dollars in engineering fees. But it still has to go through the permit process and it will have to be vented for flood. By venting, I mean openings of a certain amount. One square inch of then per square foot of floor space that's in the flood hazard area. So that the pressure equalizes the water can go in and out of the building. Or structure. So it can be done. It's not as expensive, but it's still got to have the permit. And be reviewed by the state and go through the DRB. So do you know when Martin is going to be back and up to speed?
He, he should be back later this week. He's, just needs to get a medical letter. Let his knee is back to where it needs to be, which I anticipate him getting. But he'll, so towards the end of this week or beginning of next week, I'm sure he'll be, he'll get in touch with you or if you want to reach out to him again, David, just to. Let him know you have your stuff, that would be fine.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give him a week or so to. Get reacclimated to work. He's probably got a heck of a backlog.
Yeah, I think so. The guy's been doing a good job trying to keep that to a minimum, but yes, I'm sure he'd appreciate that.
Okay, I will contact him. Anything else?
I don't think, not been. Uh, nothing for me at this point. Any of the other members of the board have any questions for David? All right, I guess not. David, thank you for joining us tonight and thank you for your patience. Appreciate it.
Again, I have been working with the planning commission on suggestions to improve the zoning and they are really acutely aware of the need for additional housing. And they're looking at different ways to modify the zoning to accomplish that.
Well, I'm sure that there's a lot of brain power around that table. They can, they can come up with something and make it so people are still. Not doing what we should be doing with the environment and building where we shouldn't be, but sounds good. Thank you, David. All right, so we're going to go ahead and move on to reports of communications. Sasha, why don't we go ahead and start with you? You want to share what you have for the board tonight?
Yep, Jerry Casals was going to join the meeting. He must have forgot about it. He would, he's interested in using the. Town hall. He started Driving School for Teenagers and would like to know if he could hold classes at the old town hall. There will be twelve students in a class Mondays and Wednesday nights, five thirty to eight, starting June third through July.
And, and that was in the, the basement, is that correct?
Yes. Yes.
And do you know if we have library hours at that time?
I do not know.
But, and again, five thirty now, that's right, five thirty to eight?
Yes.
And Monday in Wednesday or Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Monday in Wednesday nights.
Monday. And he was looking how much it was going to cost him? Is that what his question is, or if we would allow him to do it?
I think both.
All right, what's everyone think? John, Ray, Callie?
Uh, my feeling is if it follows the state guidelines as far as COVID requirements, I don't have a problem with it.
Callie?
Problem with that.
Yep, same, same with me. It would be nice to get a little, little bit of income from it, but.
Yeah, so what, um. And Sasha, I don't know, what, what was, he suggested, what he wanted to pay or do we? I, I can't remember us. We've done some of these things in the past. He is in the community. He, I mean, I don't know what. I don't know. What do you guys think for? Per class and considering it, the place will have to be cleaned. Just the downstairs. So why don't we, you want to, um. I don't know, what, fifty bucks a night? Does that sound reasonable or too much, too little, or what do you guys think?
I really don't have a good handle on the cleaning cost. Uh, but certainly it, it shouldn't be a town expense, so the fee is going to be enough to cover the cleaning plus. You know, electricity and heating and all that other stuff. So I guess I, I, it depends on what the cleaning costs would be. Would determine, you know, all those factors together would determine the rate, in my opinion.
All right, so we, I'll work with Cheryl Lynn and try to come up with, with, or Sasha, you can, what it might cost to clean the place and. And again, I, I think it's good that we just have people using. I'm not looking to make, you know, a big profit here. I just want to, I don't want it as racist. I just don't want it to cost me something either.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, you know, so you let them know that. So, yeah, we're willing to, like, use it. We're just trying to figure out what it's going to cost us and we'll pass that on to you.
Okay. Robbins reached out and he'd like permission to have their meetings outside behind the town office.
Who was that that reached out?
Steve Robbins for the.
Yeah. I don't have any problem with that.
I didn't think you would. I had a call from Dean Moulton today just wanting an update on his property pins.
I can give you a.
Okay.
It'll be within two weeks.
Okay.
Thank you, Ray. Working easy to it. Thank you, Ray, working easy to it.
Also, um, I know Sherwin had talked about it before she got the grant for the plate compactor. I just wanted to remind everybody it needs to get ordered soon.
Yeah, I talked to Martin the other day and, um, did remind him about that, so I think that's when he gets back. One of the first things he did, I think the other guys were looking into it a little bit, but he is aware of that.
Yes, I, uh, it's Stefan, I got the, I got three different quotes together for the plate compactor. Martin's just got to sit down and see what makes sense, we all talked about it and have, you know, what makes sense to us, you know, working in the ditches, but we want to. Run it through Martin and then get it to you guys.
Thank you, Stefan.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Sasha. John, how about you tonight, so I don't forget you like I did last week?
I got a call or email from Angelo at the. Commons condominium association about a dog issue there, Stefan. Is that resolved?
Um, it is not, I have to reach out to the dog owner and talk to her. Just so you guys are all aware, I I was home today, I I have a cold and it's kind of taking me down, but I. I do plan on at least contacting the dog owner tomorrow and trying to figure out what's going on a little better.
Okay. I I guess, I guess, uh, there's been an issue with. Going after like UPS and. Maybe biting some people or what, I guess, he's just been harassing the the neighbors there.
Yes, it it, it appears to be that there's not, uh, you know, there hasn't actually been any bites. It's just been, you know, snarling teeth and and, you know, harassing because it hasn't been leashed.
Alright, John, anything else?
No, that's it.
Alright, alright, Kelly, what you have for us?
Um, not much, I did talk to Stefan on Sunday about a dog issue, he called me and I called him back. Oh, and I thought he had it pretty well figured out and, um. We also chatted really quick about. Fountain Forestry had talked to Stefan about some. Burn sites, they came up to do a site visit. Up on the Herringbrook side of what they own and had had a conversation with him about. Some burn sites up there. And probably some other concerns I would assume, but. Just chatted really quick about that, so other than that, that's it.
If you'd like, I can, I can go in depth a little bit on that if you, if you guys want to hear about it.
Oh, sure, we got a couple minutes, Stefan, what's going on up there?
Um, so I talked to Fountain Forestry, they're, uh, they take care of twenty one hundred acres up there. And they did a site visit last week and, you know, their their concern is mostly, uh. That, you know, where there's there's burn spots where the people have been having fires on their property up there. And the biggest part, you know, that's their. Income that they could potentially burn down up there and he asked about options with, you know, checking it out and. You know, writing fines or whatnot for burning up there. And I also talked to my supervisor for the state fire wardens. And he agreed that it's absolutely, you know, unacceptable for somebody to burn on a property without permission. So I've been going up there a little bit more to try to assess to see. If there's somebody burning up there and I've been getting the word out that I will be up there kind of patrolling and and I will be writing fines. Just something, you know, hopefully it helps deter people from doing it, but it's a, it's something that the town can can do fairly easily to try to. Help, you know, make it, make the issue go away.
I I think that's good, Stefan, just, um, you know, be careful when you put yourself in those situations as well, just. You know, mind that too.
Absolutely.
Stefan, who was it that you met with from Fountain Forestry?
Uh, Jeff something or rather, um, Lang Langman?
Jeff Longmay, I did, I did try to reach out to him, in fact, I left him a message today. About the meeting with the, uh, Kelly and and myself as far as, uh. Generally the road and what's happening up there and what what Fountain Forest they would like to to see up there, so, uh. Okay, I just want to make sure that Jeff was still the the correct contact and it sounds like he is, so I'm hoping to hear back from him. Within a few days and and we could pursue the other issues of the. Road damage and and what's going on up there with him as well.
Ab- absolutely, he, uh, you know, he mentioned it to me about the the road damage and the. The off trails onto their property that are just getting spun up and and, you know, roded away. And he said he was was going to be doing some more work hopefully up there to protect, you know, the. You know, put up more barriers and such and more signage. And he brought up the idea of posting it all off, um, you know, no trespassing. Which is something they were thought about a couple of years ago, but didn't really want to, you know, close it all off. But, you know, it's becoming an option for them again, he said.
Yeah, no, I I. And that's what we're trying to avoid, you know, it's a, it's a well-used piece of land by a lot of the local people and unfortunately. It's being destroyed by the non, a lot of non-local. So anyways, I'm not talking about that, but, uh, pursuing something with them.
Yeah.
Thank you, Stefan, Ray. Sorry, Ray, what about, do you, uh, just share that, anything else, Ray, that you have?
I did want to talk about, and I don't know if you want to talk about like here, but as you know, I I do. Sign a lot of invoices from the town garage and and there's two that really struck with me was a. A new fuel tank for the truck. Uh, I believe that might have been around forty five hundred dollars, uh, which I don't think was in the budget and then. Uh, there was another one today for some suspension work, uh, I think was almost two thousand dollars, so. I'm I'm just a little concerned about. Number one, signing these invoices, you know, I don't really hear about this stuff until. The work is already done, you know, nobody says, we have this problem. You should be aware of this, it's like, okay, we had the problem, here's the invoice, it I don't, it seems like it should be, here's the problem. I'm going to get some pricing to fix it, you know, I understand there are sometimes emergencies, but it it just seems like it's. Procedure now to just spend money and then expect the town to pay for it and. I guess would like to see a little bit more communication here.
I know, I think that's reasonable, um, and, uh, you know, once Martin gets back. You know, we can have him in the board meeting or maybe sit down with him and and just score some of those things, I think in the last. You know, year, year and a half, things have gotten away a little bit because of, you know, again, we, I guess we're playing everything on COVID now, but. Oftentimes I used to hear when there was a breakdown and such and we had things going on, um. So, yeah, I think we need to address that with the crew and and Martin and just make sure that we're on the same page. Forty five hundred for a fuel tank, I have.
So, I can, I can explain that a little bit, um. I, it was a high amount for the fuel tank, it was fifteen hundred, I don't know where the forty five hundred came from. Uh, it was fifteen hundred and thirty seven dollars. Um, and it was actively leaking on the floor of the shop and out at the pump, so as opposed to, you know, having some sort of environmental issue. We immediately brought it before it leaked all out to Sheldon's to get fixed.
I think the amount of forty five hundred is correct.
I know his truck was up, um, previous at Sheldon's for, um, some brake work, because the brakes weren't working. Properly, um, but the forty five hundred should not have, it shouldn't have been a thing, because I asked. For a price from them before before anything happened and it was fifteen hundred dollars. It was still high in my eyes, but it shouldn't have been forty five hundred.
It was a combination of a couple of invoices, it wasn't just that, Stefan.
Okay, I just, I I heard the forty five, I'm like, that's an awful lot for the fuel tank, you know, because I I talked to him, so I I thought I had an idea of what it was.
Okay.
So, yeah, right, when, um, why don't we plan a meeting, you know, sometime next week with Martin? And just so that we can make sure that we're, uh, seeing these things before they're they're happening or. Uh, as Stefan says, some leaky gas tank or fuel tank, you know, I guess there's not a lot you can do about it, but. Certainly, uh, it wouldn't hurt to have a little heads up with this stuff, uh, prior to signing off on it.
Yeah, and Stefan, I think it was the right decision to get it fixed, I just, uh.
You know, and and I didn't even think about, you know, this, this has happened since Martin's been out and, you know, the first thought in our eyes was, well. Let's get it so we don't end up having to have it towed and, you know, have leaking fuel and, you know, have that all dealt with, let's get it there. You know, get it so that, you know, it's in their yard and they can take care of it before we have to have it towed and such.
Thank you, Stefan.
So, Ray, anything else you got there?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Alright, thank you. I think I'm all set, we did, um. Yeah, I guess we can move ahead, uh, so we have the minutes of, um, April nineteenth to go ahead and approve.
I make a motion to approve the.
Thank you, Ray.
Second.
Sasha, I mean, Kelly, thank you, all in favor of the meeting minutes?
Well, we, they need to be amended. Did you have a chance to take a look at that? Uh, take yourself off mute.
Sorry, yes, I did see it and I will make the adjustments on it for the executive session.
Alright, so with that adjustment made for executive session, was that the only thing, John?
Yep, yeah, that, all that was good, yep.
Alright. So, um. And the motions out there, all in favor, vote aye. As amended.
I amend, I amend my motion.
To conclude as amended, Ray, thank you. Now, the new motion, the minutes as amended for April nineteenth, all in favor, vote aye.
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 Aye. Alright, very good. Um, so let's go ahead, we got some old business, did we get the sandbit thing straightened out? Sasha, did you hear anything, nothing?
I haven't heard anything.
So, well, again, um, it's really Martin, he's out, so we can't really get back to us on that anyways, um. MOU, the other thing, um, there were a few people, we were working on, um. Was it pricing on the? Oh, the, the parking lot out there that we're going to get to the board, the Harvard Union Board, is that something that? I know, I think, Ray, you were working on that with Cheryl Lynn and John, maybe?
Right, uh. We did have a meeting last week, if you want to talk about that now, or?
Uh, we don't have to go into, I just want to make sure that you guys are, that it's being, that you're, you're working on it, I guess is all I want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, Ray and I need to, uh, touch base in terms of meeting with the neighbors.
Alright, so when you guys are good, I just want to make sure everyone's moving forward and, um. That we're, we're on time with that to them. That's about it with old business, I think. New business? So I have a couple of things, one, I was thinking that, um, June seventh. Uh, which is first Monday in June that we're scheduled for a meeting that we would. Uh, or could, um, meet at the town office. Um, we'll be able to at that point, be, I guess it's three feet we need now, um. We can mask, to my knowledge, um, no one needs to tell me enough, but I think we're all vaccinated, um. Is everyone, what's everyone's thoughts on that?
I would like very much that for that to happen.
Kelly, how are you? Alright. So, um, we will go ahead and do that, if Don, um, is very much opposed. Uh, we can do a Skype for him, um, and Sasha, you're all right with attending that as well?
Yeah.
Very good, so we'll plan that for the the seventh of June, getting back to to meeting there. Um, the other new business that we had, we may have brought it up a little bit, um, are we going to do anything for? Uh, Morfests this fall? We've got money in the budget, um, I know, and I, I. Lindsay, I don't know Lindsay's last name, uh, but she's on the school, she was on the school part, she contacted. Uh, Leanne, my wife, uh, to see if there was anything going on, that she would be willing to to work on it from the school perspective. So, I mean, there's a little bit of energy there to start with, I just don't know what everyone's thoughts are.
I guess my thought is, uh, you know, I think I'd like to say something, I'm just not. You know, when or what? What are you, what's everybody thinking, what were you thinking, Tom?
Well, I think, um, you know, I I think fireworks seem to be a big draw for people. I was thinking of having a big bonfire, fireworks, have the the fire department there. Doing the corn roast, maybe the select board could do a pig roast, um, and. Sometime early September, just do that and just have everyone come and if we can get some music. Um, as well, that would probably be the other third thing that we need, we got food, we got music and. Um, they would probably do a beer tent, I would imagine, the school part would. But, you know, nothing. I mean, something nice like that, but just an opportunity for, alright, this is what we're having and everyone can come down and enjoy an evening.
Yeah, I got to start it, I like the idea.
You know, and it's not too commercially where it's, you know, we're having vendors and. Uh, that type of pressure, it's more people just to come down and see people again, you know, uh. And, uh, so, you know, when the, uh, fire department could raise a little money with the with the corn roasts. Or whatever if they wanted, if not.
Oh, we, we want to, we were just discussing doing it as well.
So, um, yeah, and you could do, you know, and you do the pigs too or whatever, so, you know, just something. Kind of low-key like that, but, you know, anyone could come, but, you know, really focus towards our more town people, uh, and just. Hey, we're, we've come through this pandemic, hopefully at that point, um. You know, and we can always cancel, but, uh, if we don't schedule something, we won't be, uh, doing anything.
Right. Probably have to get on the firework, uh, agenda or schedule pretty quickly, I would guess, right?
Yeah, but being off, you know, maybe not a week, you know, I, um, a holiday type thing, it might be a little easier, but. Yeah, I think you'd want to get a contract there fairly quick. Get a contract there fairly quick. Um, and also if they were, you know, finding uh some kind of a band to play or something, but. Um. You know, I can mention it to the those two people who had uh expressed interest. They could put something out on front porch. Form to form some kind of a committee or group to do it and see what they come up with and then report back to us.
Sounds good.
So, cop a sec with everyone?
Yep.
All right, um. I think that's all I had. Um. Yeah, I think everything else's stuff, uh. But, yeah, we're all good. I thought it was good tonight. Uh, getting Tori to come. I know we had originally talked about sending a a letter, but. That she was able to come, her and Tony, so I thought that was uh better and I think it's good to have the communication there, so. Um, you know, hopefully we can keep that open and, you know, be in the in the loop there with that a little bit.
Yeah, no, that that was really good. I mean, I uh sat in on the section of their meeting the other night that dealt with the merger. And it was a question and answer for the for the board members and both Lisa and Kristen had some some good questions. But, um, you know, there's still, you know, a lot is up in the air and.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So, I did, so I did have actually today, just wanna make.
The mood seems.
I was just gonna say, I heard from uh Christine Sullivan actually reached out to me today uh from the Harvard board. I didn't speak with her. She left a message. I was in the meeting at the time. Um, so there is a, uh, at least they're reaching out a little bit at this point.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, which is, which is a good sign and and. Things seem to be okay, so.
Yep, well, you know, continue to monitor that and, you know, offer our input when we can, I guess. All right, so if there's nothing uh that's tending here, and I don't think there is, we can probably get out of here. I do wanna remind everyone, though, please. Sign um both the the um financing and the other declaration and get it uh sent back to Cheryl Lynn if we could. Make her happy, cause you know how she gets.
Will do.
There's three places that need to be signed on that note.
I think you were still on, Cheryl Lynn. Where the hell are you?
Just so you can't see me. It's getting late.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. All right, well, so she's here. So anyways, uh, we appreciate that, everybody, and I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
I'll be in touch, John.
Okay.